I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anita. First up, we have open forum. And any announcements? I have one, which is just a reminder, if you haven't seen it some other way, that Chris Sanders and the Westford School Committee are leading a series of restorative justice workshops and discussions as we come to terms and learn. This was all precipitated by the racist comments made at a recent basketball game. And so we're moving through that as a community. And thank you, Eric. There is a session. First, two things you can do. One is you can watch the video of the session that was held last week. And if you Google Westford Restorative Justice, it'll come up. The YouTube link will come up. And then second, on Thursday night, at 6:00, there's a number of small group circle meetings that will be held. And if you'd like to participate in that, we encourage you to do that. And Eric has up here, there's a link on there where you can go to sign up. You can also contact Chris Sanders if you go to the Google Chris Sanders, Westford School Committee. You can find ways to reach him as well. But I hope that many of you are able to join as we sort of come to terms with this in our community. Any other updates from other board members? If you want to cover up top. Okay, we will move to our 705 agenda item, request for change of directors on Massachusetts General License, All Alcohol Club License for Stony Brook Fishing Game. And maybe I will see if Patty is here or Eric is here can let us know if things are all in order with that request.
Just unmuting Patty now.
Hi Patty.
Hi, this is Patty. I am here.
Hi Patty.
How are you tonight? The Stony Brook is just changing their directors on their liquor license because the directors are also responsible for their liquor license. So this needs to come to the board for your approval and then goes to the ABCC. They've turned everything in, everything appears to be in order on our end. And so we're good to go if you approve it.
Okay, great. Any questions? If they're not, I will entertain a motion to approve the change of directors on Massachusetts General License 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Club License for Stony Brook Fishing Game, 128 Lowell Road.
So moved.
There you go.
Thank you, and we'll call as we always do. Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
And I'm also an I. Thanks Patty.
You're welcome.
Our 710 item is the consent agenda, request to approve the following event on the Town Common, which is a request for the rain date for an Earth Day celebration. Applicant is Carol Morse on behalf of Westford Climate Action. Date is Saturday, April 23rd, 2022. Time is between 2:00 and 6:00 PM. And there's also a banner request for Learn to Row. Application is Jonathan Reichek on behalf of Westford Community Rowing. The date would be Friday, June 3rd, 2022 to Monday, June 13th, 2022. Location is the JV Fletcher Library. I see that Carol is out there. If anyone has any questions they'd like to ask her about the event. Any questions on either of those?
I'm wishing to approve.
Thanks Scott. Go to second.
There you go.
Excellent. All in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I'm also an I. And that takes us to our 715 item, review the draft charge and determine makeup of membership for new monument committee to formalize a process review monument requests and make recommendations to the select board. Eric, if you can just bring up the verbiage that we had in our packet, just so people who are watching might be able to take a look at it and then we'll come back to discussion. While we're waiting, Scott?
Just a question. I know we're ahead of schedule. Are there people in the audience who are there for this or are we ahead of time?
That's a good question. There are a number of people in the audience that I would guess are here as part of that.
Okay, good.
But if there's any concern, we could do another item out of order until 715.
That's what we usually do, I think, if we get them that we know what people want to speak to, we try to get close to the time.
Okay, well, that's a great suggestion. That is the principal thing on the agenda tonight that people might want to take part in. So why don't we? Let's see. Carol may also be here. Let's do item seven, number two, which is a request from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee to increase their membership to 12, adding one alternate seat and appointing Nick Schott as an alternate member for term to expire on June 30th, 2024. Any questions on that before I entertain a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
There you go.
All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
I'm also an I. And why don't we hop to the Town Manager's Report? Eric, do you want to take us through these items?
Sure. Sorry, I feel like Jody, I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself there for a second. So on the Town Manager Report, tonight, we have announced the reimbursement received from the Federal Emergency Management Agency for spending between September 15, 2020 and December 31st, 2020, for the following, for $112,681.98 for firefighter overtime, $963.36 for police custodial overtime, and $46,296.03 for PPE disinfecting and other supplies related to COVID. Want me to keep going with the purchase orders or?
Yeah, please do.
And then request to approve the following purchase orders. All heroes, all sports heroes for 12 bulletproof vests, the amount of $16,545.96, as requested by the Police Department. And the following contracts, Geo Sync Tech for professional engineering services for the continuation of Stony Brook Flow Restoration Project, the amount of $44,304. Mayor Services for the installation of test wells at Depot Road well site, the amount of $12,474, both requested by the Water Department. And two grants, one from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs in support of social services at the Cameron Senior Center, in the amount of $40,248. And a Department of Fire Services for student awareness and fire education, in the amount of $8,230, as requested by the Fire Department.
Good, thanks Eric. Any questions on those? Scott?
I have a question. I just wanted to say, you know, thanks to town staff for the FEMA request because there was a lot of paperwork required to make that happen. But that's a, you know, real impact to our bottom line for town. So thanks for making it happen.
Thanks Scott. Anita?
I would just echo my thanks as well. And I wanted to confirm that the amount that we received in terms of the reimbursement for FEMA was the same amount that we had requested. So it was a match.
I think that's pretty, Eric.
A confirmation, that's just a confirmation. So it's a match, like everything we asked for, we received back.
I believe so, but I certainly could confirm tomorrow with Dan in the morning.
Okay.
Okay. Great. Well, if there are no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There you go.
All right, thank you. All in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
I'm also an I. And let's take a look, some, any other things we might want to tackle? I'm saving the library update because I'm looking forward to that. I know it's going to be longer than the five minutes that we have here. Are there any board reports or updates? Has this evening? Okay, well, we're getting pretty close. Why don't we go ahead and move to the, to, let me get you the right item. Item six on our agenda, which is to review the draft charge and determine the makeup membership of the new monument committee. And Eric, if I could ask you again, just to bring that verbiage up for anyone who is watching that hasn't had a chance to look at it yet. Just give people a sense, just a short chance to read that. This is, of course, in the packet, if you want to refer back to it. Okay, thanks Eric. We can go back to the overview. And why don't we open the floor for discussion around the proposed verbiage? Anita?
Yeah, you know, I was reading through this and I was trying to compare it to some of the language that we had looked at previously. For example, the example that we have from Lowell, and I know that's in our meeting packet, some of those materials from our last meeting. The question and concern that I have about the member makeup is that we have two seats that are held for Westford remembers. And I know Westford remembers does amazing work in our town, but we don't have, as far as I know, and I kind of checked in with Eric a little bit, that we don't have any other committee that holds formal seats for nonprofits, right? So we have committees that hold seats for our other town committees and other town boards, but we don't do it for Westford Cat, for example, on the Communication Advisor Committee, or we don't do it for the League of Women Voters on like the Access to Town Meeting Committee. So it feels kind of weird to have these two seats just for Westford remembers. But, you know, the Historical Commission, that makes sense to me. Representative of the Westfords Veterans, I feel like we should, that's totally fine, but I feel like we should broaden that as well because the monuments might be for, you know, for women or in just general, like other, or like farmers in town. I feel like we shouldn't pigeonhole ourselves into one direction. So I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Okay, maybe we can share in discussion and then we can see if there's any, either proposed amendments to the language or whether we want to take that on board and come back to it in another meeting. Scott?
Well, I think, yeah, the notion of the veteran, sort of designee, if you will, was, because the reality is that most of the monuments we have in town now are in honor of those who served in various wars. And hopefully that is something that we have a whole lot more need for in the future. But, you know, the current stock that we have is disproportionate, I think, in honor of veterans. And if you look at the past Monument Committee, we used to have one that also had a Veterans Affairs Officer on that committee. So I think we took out the VSO necessarily as a, as a town position and replaced it with just a veteran sort of spokesman, which could be the current VSO, a past VSO, or other, you know, designee. Yes, Westford members, I think the notion is that you're part of there is this is a commission to tell us, or help us decide what the right criteria, I guess, are for monuments and also how, you know, how they should look and feel. And that degree, I think, was somebody, as I mentioned last time, that has experience with, well, building monuments. And that is sort of the town committee that's had the most experience with that since 9/11. If you look at 9/11 Memorial, the Westford Night, the Polari Monument Memorial, that's sort of what that team has done. It made sense to sort of put that knowledge, you know, to use on this committee. So it's a minority, it's a majority, but it does give us a representation of our local expertise.
Thanks Scott. Anita?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that I don't have concerns with having members of Westford remembers on the committee. I know that they have a lot of expertise and they've done a lot for the town and they have a lot of knowledge and just for even maintenance and upkeep, I understand that. But do we need to name these seats specifically for Westford remembers? Could it just be like open to the community at large? And then we have members of Westford remembers apply, as I know they have?
I guess that was a question back to you, Scott. What do you?
I mean, that's why I guess we're here to decide. My inclination is to include them, but I'm sure there are people in the audience who are from that team that also speak for themselves. So I'll let it rest there for the moment.
Okay, we will open up for comment for the, after we've continued with the board discussion, we'll open up for comment from anyone who might be joining us virtually. John?
Yeah, I think people, the members from Westford remembers is good for the committee because that's the reason we started this thing, their activity and what they've done for the town. So I'm comfortable with that.
Thanks, John. I guess one comment I had looking at this was, and this may have been covered before in other meetings, and I did have to miss one recently, which I apologize for, that by stepping outside of a sort of soldier base or war memorial based stuff, we are kind of in a wide open territory now. And most of the comparable communities that were listed are still focused, at least the language in their charter is still pretty much focused on memorial stuff. I don't know if this is something we might ask the committee to come back to us after this committee is formed and staffed, but it seems like you could take quite a broad view of who might, who we might be remembering. So we have one candidate that's already been presented. There's some, you know, amazing women that have done amazing things in town and broken barriers that we may want to make sure that we're thinking about. There are all kinds of communities in town that I think deserve, you know, thoughtful consideration in terms of what it would mean to be remembered, what signals we'd be sending. So I don't, I guess I'm wondering if we would like to ask this committee to come back at some point soon and brief us and sort of give a sense of what their process is and sort of how they're wrapping their heads around this whole, this whole issue. Because I think there's a lot of people worthy of thoughtful remembrance. And I'm just wondering how we make sure we're taking that broad view from the beginning and not sort of taking things as they come, which I think could result with a lot of white men being stacked up here if we don't take a broad view from the beginning. So I don't know if board members have any reaction to that, but I feel like that would be a good thing to do upfront, so that we don't end up just encountering people who happen to be suggested and we're taking a holistic view of the community from the get go. Scott?
Well, I think that's what we have, the, you know, the committee is to, you know, think about criteria that would not be just, you know, a single view of war heroes or veterans, but to include more. I would note that, you know, to think about the most recent monument, it is the Polari Memorial, which is not to a veteran, but to a local, you know, young child or teenager who have a lot of vision and vibrance and we remember that in that memorial. I was just Sunday, there was an article on one of the TV shows, it was the Jane Pauli Sunday Morning Show, I can't remember what it's called now, but Barry Vermont lost a huge chunk of the population to the Spanish flu. So they just recently commissioned a monument to the, to the losses from Barry in that, in that event. So it isn't, I think the towns were thinking about that, we should probably encourage that as part of the criteria and perhaps somebody from, you know, Westford remembers could speak to what other monuments they've been talking about doing. Because I know that we've got one, both that came to us, but there are other ones that they've been thinking about that may or may not be veteran focused.
Thanks Scott. Anita?
Don't want to sound like a broken record, but I agree with you, Tom, because I think we should think broader. And I think by, by thinking what the makeup is, we're setting that direction of what, how broad that scope could be, right? So again, I do feel uncomfortable with having two seats specifically for a nonprofit because that nonprofit, like Westford remembers, could change 20 years from now what that looks like. Why should they have a seat here when we don't offer that same type of seating to our other nonprofit partners who do a lot for us as well? And then that aside, I, when I thought of the Monument Committee, I thought of broader things of women who've contributed to the community generally, or if it's farmers or mill workers or the Russians or the community who are here at the Immigrants from a long time ago. Like, is that going to be captured in this makeup? Or, you know, I know that Linda Green submitted a citizen activity form, which I was happy to see. What about the Cultural Council in town? They've also talked about public sculptures, which I know is different than a memorial or a monument, but I want to be inclusive in terms of how we're viewing this and that it is an inclusive application process or standardized process.
Thanks Anita. John, I think I saw your hand.
Well, you know, it's pretty wide open right now. I mean, this committee is designed to respond to requests. People make requests or proposals for this and it's open, it's wide open for anyone to make a recommendation. And the committee then decides based on their criteria, what we agree to, to review that. So are we talking about having the membership representative of a wide range of groups in town versus the ones that we propose here, seven? I mean, to me, it's, we're going to review any requests. A request could come from anywhere within town. And it should be inclusive of everyone.
Yep, yep. Anita?
I didn't know if that question was to me. So I just got my hand up to you. Yeah. I guess, I mean, you're right, anybody could apply, but I'm thinking about, so Westford remembers, to me, I've always associated more with the veterans community, right? They're doing fundraising for veterans. I think of that in sort of that lens. So we have two members from Westford remembers, which are heavy on the veteran side. I know they do more than that, but that's really what I've associated with them recently. And then we have the Historical Commission, which is separate, but then a representative of also Westford veterans. And so it does feel heavy on that end of the spectrum of what this could really broad committee could be doing or reaching. And so that is my concern, that we're missing other, other things that they might not think about, right? Because their expertise is in this area. So we do have three at-large community members, but I just think, is it going to be half veterans and half everything else? Is that really equal?
Scott?
Yes, I just want to, I think, to me, the softest piece of this charge is the size of the committee. If you think back to our two most recent committees we formed, DEI and Sustainability, we ended up with a lot more volunteers than we had spots on the committee. So we broadened the committee's size. So, yeah, I think it says seven because you have to have a strong man in place, but if we have nine applicants and there's, all of them have got great backgrounds and ideas, I think we make it nine. So I just want to, at least in my mind, make it clear that, you know, seven is sort of the lower bound, but if it is open to a broader constituency, if that's what, that's what, you know, has interest in volunteers.
Yeah, I briefly thought of, you know, would it be healthy for this committee to have a DEI committee member liaison, just so we're always keeping front and center sort of who are we listening to and who are we recognizing and who are we celebrating? But, yeah, I don't know if we want to overburden this young committee with too many constraints right now. But anyway, I feel like that's something that we would ask, at least, well, it's a discussion for the board, whether we'd want to basically make a request to this young committee that I described before, to kind of give us a big picture. Because, John, I understand what you're saying about, look, anyone can make a nomination and they're going to respond to what they see. But if at the end of that, we haven't seen a group of people that we think really represents the broad strength getting recognized, then I think we'll feel like we've made a mistake. Like, if the first eight people who were put forward all happened to be white men, and that's what we ended up with, I think we'd feel like we had not, we'd done a disservice. I think we want there to be an understanding that if we're going to be, you know, recognizing people in the public space somewhere in town with a memorial or remembrance of some kind, that we're trying to build a collection of voices and not just reacting to people who come over the transom. Okay, why don't we go and I see a couple of hands from other attendees. Eric, if you could promote Nancy Cook? And David, I see you as well. We'll make sure we get to you.
We have a chat too, Tom.
Oh, let me take a look at that. Diane asks, is the request to have a business owner on this committee, i.e. a monument designer, would that be a conflict, would that not be a conflict of interest? I don't know, why don't we, why don't we think about that a bit, Diane? But I do, I do see the question and we'll make sure we think about that when we get to the people applying. Hi Nancy.
Hi, Tom. Thank you very much. Thank you all for giving me a moment. Anita, while I hear what you're saying, we are still Westford residents and I, that we have done veterans' work. David's also been for the last couple of years, working on a Women of Westford with the Historical Society. He did the Polari Monument, which is diverse. He's working on a Native American, only because people have asked him to work on those. So, you know, we're not solely veterans. And as far as DEI, I am the co-chair of the, of DEI Town Policy and Procedure Committee. I am a member of DEI. I think I spoke to you about the DEI Committee and said, Westford has always been a diverse community. My grandparents were first generation here. My neighbors were Russian, the next ones were Polish, the next one were English, all the way around the block. And, and we've always been a diverse, I think at some point, we're coming to the point where we're saying it to the point where we're making walls instead of taking them down. We need to, we need to embrace all of our community, 100%, but by not sticking all of us in corners and saying, you're not diverse. That's, I think that's what I'm taking back from what you said, Anita. And I, I think that there's so many people that have given to this town, as you said, the farmers, the Russians, the work that those people did when they came. All that somebody has to say is, we'd like to do this. And the committee has criteria to come up with it. I think we're being unfair by saying we're not diverse enough or we're not looking diverse enough. Just my opinion.
Well, at least, at least, and we'll go to Anita, but Nancy, I wasn't, I wasn't, first of all, I appreciate and thank you for your service on, on the CI Committee as well. And I was, I should have mentioned that, I was thinking, I know there's at least an applicant that's already doing that, already representing both those groups and that, I think is a strong add. And I wasn't making any comment about this group being diverse enough or not in terms of the makeup of the group. I just, I think it might be helpful if the charter, maybe this someone will ask you to suggest back to us as the committee, but in the charter, should there be any kind of formal, just saying it out loud, that representing the full historical diversity of Westford is an important criteria here? That's all I, that's all I, I wasn't trying to make any kind of criticism.
Wouldn't it be wonderful to come up with something that did represent the full diversity of Westford from the beginning through today? I mean, that would be a wonderful, David, think. I mean.
Yeah, I kind of teared up when I was going through some of the World War I memorials of how they had recruiting stations for World War I in like 12 different languages because there's so many languages spoke in the mills. I just, it was a strong, sort of a little patriotic moment there for me. Anita?
I just wanted to say a couple of things and I appreciate Nancy that you're being very straightforward and honest and that you're having this conversation. I guess two things. One is you're putting words into my mouth. I didn't talk about diversity. That was Tom's comment, as you just mentioned here. I know you're on the DEI Committee and I worry that we're setting a precedent about having a nonprofit hold seats on our town committees. I'm not having an issue with Westford remembers. I'm not having an issue with the Westford remembers members who are applying to be on the committee. What I have a concern about is the seat for a nonprofit. We don't do that for the League of Women Voters. We don't do that for Westford Cat. Why are we doing it for Westford remembers? Why is this nonprofit being treated differently than our other nonprofits? What precedent are we setting by this committee? I thank you for all the work that you do in town, but there was not any sort of personal attack to you and I'm sorry if you took it that way. I'm talking about a nonprofit precedent and policy for our committees.
Maybe there should be some on Westford Cat.
Okay. All right, thanks Nancy. Feel free to stay with us if you'd like. I have a, I see a comment from David. Eric, if you can elevate David. Hi, David.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good, thanks. I think you went back on mute. David, I think you're back on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfect.
All right, great. So I just want to make a couple of comments. I understand Anita's concern about two seats held for a nonprofit. Our situation is a little unique in the sense that we actually started as a town committee. So it's kind of like, it was kind of a gray area for a long time. We just became a nonprofit just so we can get more donations to help pay for some of the monuments we're doing. Also, the stuff we're doing for COVID, people in town. That aside, as far as the whole diversity thing and thinking more openly about monuments, memorials, I totally agree with with Anita and you, Tom. There are several projects that have kind of been put to the side due to the whole COVID situation and us raising money specifically to help the residents with bills and stuff. And many of them, like I think Nancy mentioned a couple. There's a Native American man that lived on Route 40, Mr. Gammet. He used to make bicycles for all the kids in town. He'd have hundreds of bicycles in front of his house. And he gave me my first bicycle because I couldn't afford a bicycle when I was a child here in Westford. People like that have a huge impact. And another project is the Women of Westford that we've been working with, Linda Green with, as well as another one, Caesar Basin, who is a Minuteman. He was a person of color. And I believe he was the first Western Minuteman to get killed in the war. So, you know, it's not all veterans. I like to think outside of the box. Unfortunately, a lot of, well, not unfortunately, fortunately, a lot of people that come up for memorial status or recognition, whether it be a little small plaque or a little historic marker or a monument, happen to be veterans because Westford's history is full of veterans from World War One, World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, all the way back to the Revolutionary War. And a lot of the men in Westford were veterans and fought in these wars. So it's going to come up, but we're trying to also recognize people that do a lot of community service. A lot of times they happen to be veterans. So we can't take that away from them. We've also been approached about like a sculpture garden or park in Westford. So we're very open to all this stuff. We we do a lot of different things that are not veteran related. But that aside, I know I applied for the for the position on the Monument Committee, but again, we don't know people's diversities or people's backgrounds. So a lot of people don't know about my background or who I am. They just know that I'm a white tattooed firefighter. And that can draw a lot of conclusions. So I just hope that we base it on people's experience, their passion for it. They're them really wanting to do something special for the town and not just based on what they look like.
Okay, thanks, David. So I think we're ready to address the question of whether we want to move forward with the charter as written and then consider the applicants that we've received so far. So Anita, we've definitely heard your point. I guess what's the, what's the the pleasure of the board in terms of either moving forward with this language or considering an amendment or any other thoughts? I guess what we're looking for is to be other, what's our sense of, I don't know, whether we as a board have any concerns about having the the two positions designated as they are in the draft article with regard to Westford remembers? I guess I heard Scott, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but Scott and John, it seemed like you had less less of a concern with that issue. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I guess that one, I I'm not sure that you know, raises a fair point. I never really thought about numbers of nonprofits on on boards. I think, you know, the the danger is if you think about like Westford Cat on the Communication Advisory Committee, well, Communication Advisors Committee Committee is making, you know, business arrangements with carriers that would directly affect Westford Cat. So they can't be on it because it'd be a conflict of interest. I think that that would not be true in all cases, but just that example probably it would be true. In this case, we've got a, you know, a nonprofit that's got no financial affection to the awards or to the monuments side. I don't see any conflict. So I don't think it's a precedent so much as it is recognition of history of that of that of that team. And we just treat this as it comes up on a committee by committee basis.
Okay, thanks. Anita?
I guess my other example is the League of Women Voters submitted a letter for a seat on the Access to Town Meeting Committee. And we didn't, we didn't do that, right? And there's no conflict. There's no financial interest there. So I just want to make sure we're consistent in how we're applying these roles or our decisions. And so I'm comfortable with moving forward the charge, but I'm not, I'd like to vote separately in terms of the makeup, if that's what we wanted to do tonight.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, we have some excellent candidates in queue. I don't think anyone's having any any concerns or questions about the candidates. It's more the kind of policy precedent. So Anita, I under I understand your point and it it probably is something that is worthy of being a little bit cautious about. Scott?
I just want to be clear. So I mean, if we, my understanding that if we were to form this committee tonight, we're then going to advertise, right now, we've got some applications through word of mouth, but there's been no official advertising of the committee. So after tonight, there would be a townwide advertisement for community members to join. We may get, you know, more. And again, we might change that composition based upon that.
Yeah, you're exactly right, Scott. We would go through that process. So that's a good point to make. Okay, well, Anita has made a request to to consider the charge and then the makeup separately. Well, why don't we do that? Why don't we go ahead and and consider the charge? So I'll entertain a motion. And just to be clear, let me just make sure I'm so basically it'd be the first it'd be the first two paragraphs of the charges written that we'd be voting on first and then the second. Basically, the second part is what includes the the composition. So I will entertain a motion to vote on the first two paragraphs of the charge as written.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. And then Anita, do you want to make a, propose an amendment? So now we're in, let's see, I guess we would make a a motion in a second and then entertain an amendment during discussion, if I have my procedure correct. I guess the alternative would be if people don't feel like we, you know, are ready to address this tonight, if no one made the motion. So I guess I'll, I'll open it up for someone to make a motion on this first one. And again, what we do is we'd motion, we'd second, then we'd have a discussion and there'd be an opportunity for amendments at that time. So is there a motion to to move forward and take a position on the composition of the committee?
I could make up. I could create a motion, I guess. So I, I, I move to amend this. Do you want me to say how I would want it worded or just that I want to amend this proposed language that's in front of us?
If you're going to make a motion, yeah, I guess if you if you want to propose alternative language and then make the motion and then we'll open up for a second.
Okay, I I move to that the committee shall be comprised of seven members, one member from the Historical Commission and three, four, six members of the, of three, six community at large members.
Okay, thank you, Anita. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Thanks, John. So we'll open any discussion? Okay, there being none, let's move to a vote. Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, because three to one. Okay, thank you. And Scott, to your point, I guess we'll leave the applications we have so far in the packet for for consideration. We really appreciate that people have put their names forward already. And I think this is going to be a great committee. And is any other, any other comments from the board before we move on from this agenda item? Okay.
I just want to make one comment here, Tom. And that's, this is memorials on town owned property, which includes conservation land, includes school property, all town owned property. So that's a, that's a, that would be my interpretation. So we might have to address, you know, when the committee meets, address that in that vein.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I think the schools would have some write a review on something on school property. Scott?
Yeah, I was going to ask that we may want to get a town council opinion on that because, yeah, schools, I'm not sure, can be. Yeah, I'm not sure this would apply to schools that says, you know, town building committee is not doing school buildings. I don't know how that division works with with the state. And then secondly, if land is in a care and custody of the Conservation Commission, not the Select Board, I'm not sure we have a right to to comment on that. So I'd appreciate if Eric could ask for town council's opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I'm just going to take a look at the the comments or the questions in the Q and A section. I guess to Diane's question, when we actually get to a when actually consider a candidate, we could consider if any of the candidates face a conflict of interest. I'm not sure if anyone can see this. Let me read it. Diane asks, is the request to have a business owner on this committee, a monument designer, would that not be a conflict of interest? I think we'd need to consider that in the context of who the applicant was. So I think that will come up, Diane, in a later meeting, when we're actually reviewing and voting on on the membership itself. And then Westford Cat asks, my understanding is that Westford Cat is not represented on the, let's see, is it the Communication Advisory Committee? Because the Communication Advisory Committee has oversight over Westford Cat. When I applied for a position on the community, on the Communication Advisory Committee, I was told that it'd be a conflict of interest to have me serve on the Communication Advisory Committee while working for Westford Cat. Yeah, I remember that correctly, if that's that's coming from you, Steve. I think that's, I do remember that issue coming up and that being the conclusion. Okay, well, good. Thank you. Thank you for all your work and your interest in this, David, Nancy. And I'm really excited about some of the ideas that you brought up that will recognize the the full historic diversity of our community. And I've got a lot of confidence that we're going to do a great job celebrating that. And now why don't we move to item seven, one, which is an update on the J V Fletcher Library Expansion Projects from our library director, Ellen Rainey.
Hi, good evening. How are you doing?
Hi, Ellen. Great.
So I will just update us some on the library building construction process and project. We became available or eligible as a town in 2007 to again seek construction grant funding from the Board of Library Commissioners, our state agency. And that was the year that requests began on my capital budget. It wasn't until 10 years ago, March of 2012, was the first of four town meeting votes to both fund the planning and design grant, which was a stepping stone grant. And then in October of 2016, the town voted to accept the planning and design grant. It was a competitive grant and we were fortunate to be one of 33 communities that was ranked and waitlisted in order to receive funds from the state. In our case, $7.85 million to be matched with local fundraising of about 1.3 million, 30% of which is in hand. And at that point, as of March 2020, we anticipated that the town cost would be about 12.3 million. So one decade later, we are now number five on the waitlist. We've seen communities below us complete their projects. We've seen communities not pursue their projects. We've seen mostly cities above us on the waitlist go ahead and completely pay for their projects in advance at a lower bond rate and a lower purchasing and borrowing rate because they either had the levy limit to do it or they had the funds in hand to make that available. And they are now waiting for their grant to come. We're at the point where, having so long estimated that we would hear we had a provisional grant in July 2023, we learned in late January that we might be told that our notice would be a year sooner. Now, we're already in a different world since late January. And even though I have literally called the Board of Library Commissioners every other day for a week, it's now unclear whether the Office of Administration and Finance under the governor will actually increase the bond cap. We don't know, therefore, if we'll be told we have a grant to be acting on in July of '22 or in July of '23. Clearly, whichever year it is, we want to be sure that we're asking for the most accurate design estimates in advance of that. What we do know, and I know that this board realizes that for a couple of COVID years, we have been counting our statistics in terms of miles walked. This current year, we are tracking almost identical circulation to what we had in FY19. That was our highest circulation year ever, when we circulated 17.4 items per Westford resident. And we saw a return on investment of about $10.81 for each dollar spent on the library. So now we are waiting to find out whether we will be told that we have six months between January, between July of '22 to January of '23, or July of '23 to January of '24. Once we receive a grant notice from the state, we do have six months in order to have the three critical votes that are necessary. One would be a town meeting vote of two thirds approval. One would be your board's vote to put the question on a ballot. And the last would be a majority vote at the ballot box. So that's the process. But we are still unsure whether something that has taken us a decade of waiting will now be rushing us this summer or whether it will be another year. So of course I'll be conveying that to the Finance Committee, the Select Board, the Capital Committee as soon as we know. But at this point, we are still in a waiting position.
Thank you, Ellen. Any questions from the board for Ellen? John? John?
Ellen, uh, with your knowledge of the cap, what is the cap that you're talking about? And, uh, when you look at the four ahead of us, they total, uh, a significant amount of money. What are the, uh, odds that they'll all get approval before it's time for us? And then we'll get that sooner than later.
So there is, um, an annual cap on the amount of bonded funds that the Board of Library Commissioners can administer each year. It has been $20 million. And because, John, each, um, project has to meet specific benchmarks in order to receive grant payments, they're not fully funding any one grant. For example, number one on the waitlist now is Westboro. They will not receive a full payment from the Board of Library Commissioners this July. You know, should their, um, should their town approve that? So there are, uh, payments, uh, I think they're eaked across, across five specific benchmarks. What is in play at the moment, or was before inflation, oil prices, the tanking stock market and the invasion of Ukraine, was the possibility that the bond cap for the Board of Library Commissioners would be increased to $25 million, I think, because of ARPA funds, because of federal infrastructure funds. It was felt that this might be a flush year and that there would be more funding available. I don't know if this past month has changed that. And I, I think it must have impacted the decision making some because originally we were told we would know by February 28th if that bond cap was going to be increased. So there's still a real possibility that we will not come up for our bond notice. We would, we would get a notice in July and that might not now happen until 2023. Those are the two dates that are in play. Will we be told in 2022 of July or 2023? In each case, the municipality has six months to approve the grant and begin their project.
Okay, thank you. Well, the reason I ask is, uh, we're looking at excluded debt here. And if it moves out a little bit further, that changes the picture on just how much excluded debt we have.
Absolutely. And, you know, this was always our intention to be, to not crowd the town hall annex, to be further out. You know, at the time we projected costs, we projected them through March of 2020. The average taxpayer was going to pay a dollar eighty-seven a week for the library. And we were going to be able to smooth that across the debt exclusion schedule. With, you know, increases in costs, which everyone knows now are considerable, and inflation. We don't know what costs we'll be looking at. We're very interested to see the most recent cost for the Gloucester Public Library and another library in the western part of the state, um, both of whom are now getting actual cost estimates. We, we understand this is a large price tag, even though there's considerable grant funds of almost $8 million through the town. But whether the finances really look sensible, this is something the town will have to decide once we have real numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Scott?
Actually, I think maybe you answered my question, but, um, certainly any S-4s used originally to project cost forward, you know, became junk about two years ago with, with construction costs. So, um, so the state, the state grant is, that is fixed. So no matter what happens to the total cost, that just because, I bet just because of problem for us to bond it, there's no move on the state side?
Yes. So I will be very clear about this. The amount that we get from the state is static. It's $7.85 million. In our original budget, we pledged about one and a quarter million. That would be local fundraising. I think that and nothing more is realistic. So if there are sizable, um, construction increases, yes, it would hit the town bond and that difference would be picked up by the town. So those are why the current cost estimates, um, are so interesting to us. And it's also why we don't want to get estimates a year early if we actually are not coming, uh, up for a notice until July of '23.
Thanks, Ellen. And I have a question, which is, uh, thank you for this update. It's very helpful. It doesn't seem like there's anything more we can do until we know. Because we don't know what we'd be asking the town for until we know.
No.
Is that right?
That is correct. You, you just reminded me, I'll just share a non-financial moment. You know, in our historical collection, we have the postcards that were sent out during the 1918 pandemic asking Westford residents to bake their books before they returned them so that they would be sanitized and healthier. So, um, you know, some things, some things never change. So, um, this has been a long waiting game. The construction projects, um, are very long term. Um, you know, it has been 10 years, um, since the last grant round. Our grant round was 2017. We would expect it to be, uh, another 10 years if we miss this grant round. I can honestly say I became acting director in October of 1984. My first charge was to write designer selection, uh, RFPs for the, um, 1988 edition. So, you know, we will be headed toward the 40-year mark as we contemplate, um, this expansion. And, um, the finances of it, you know, are everything because we do not know what those real actual costs will be in this current climate. And we don't yet know. And of course, I'll tell you immediately when we hear if there's likely to be a notice this July.
Okay. Thank you. John?
Ellen, I have a request. Uh, could you take a look at the, the timeline? I know she mentioned, uh, we'll have six months to do certain things. I've looked this up and I can't remember what it says. But that, what do we have to do in those six months? And then when you look at the, you know, going downstream, some kind of timeline that lays out how the funding would go. Because as you mentioned, sometimes when they give us the eight million dollars or whatever it is, it may come in chunks 20% of the time over a period of time. Or, uh, I don't know how that would actually work.
So I can tell you exactly what would happen within the six months of notification. So for example, were we to receive notice this July 7th that we were being awarded a provisional grant, the six-month clock would begin ticking. So by October 17th of special town meeting, we would want a warrant. Of course, we would make your warrant deadline. We would want, uh, an appropriation article on the special town meeting warrant. This would be for the entire amount of the construction cost. We would need the select board to vote to put, if there's a positive vote for that, to put this, um, debt exclusion vote on a ballot. And that election would need to take place, I would think, before mid-December because January 7th of 2023 would be our six-month timeline. Now, as soon as we, as a community, accept the grant and, um, and sign the contract with the Board of Library Commissioners, they immediately give us some funds. And then you're right, John, I've, I've looked at this with Dan O'Donnell, but, um, I, I don't remember exactly, you know, there are certain benchmarks, you know, that we have to meet in terms of working with the designer, engaging a contractor, um, you know, occupancy and these things in order for us to be parsed out the grant amount.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the last time we had a building, uh, project, I think that we only had a 15-year bond, but we absolutely, you know, can have a 30-year bond. And we only have to borrow, um, as we actually need the funding. So even though, this is a little arcane, but even though we have to appropriate the entire amount, it's like the school building assistance program. We only have to float a bond and borrow those amounts as they are needed to pay the immediate bills.
Excellent. Scott?
Yeah, so, um, as I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, but we, when we, after the grant, we had a, a design in mind for the library, not a, you know, 100% design, but a, an approximate design. So, yeah, between then and now, we've also had a, um, I guess you'd say awakening as to the environment, um, in this town. Um, and so if we were to take about design changes that would make the building more efficient, that would be allowed by the state. We'd be on our nickel, that's the town's, the town's cost. But we could make those changes and not get penalized, correct?
So, um, absolutely. I've been talking with, um, members of the sustainability committee. And the same architect that you did our design is currently working on the Amherst Jones Library. It's a much bigger project. It's a $39.3 million granite building project. But yes, they too have worked very hard to have, uh, both a net zero building and a sustainable building. And it has incurred some upfront costs, Scott, but the, um, belief is that it will, um, be paid off over time. I think the other big change as we look, you know, because we certainly were not looking at a completely electric building. You know, we were working on our designs in 2015 and 2016, um, is ventilation. You know, as a result of COVID, um, more and more the impulse is to have ventilation be a separate mechanical system from the HVAC system. So, yes, those, those are potentially ahead of us, but, um, you know, several of our oldest walls, um, our original 1895 walls are already wrapped by new wings that were built in 1988. And the rear wall of the building will be wrapped by the new addition. And, um, if the new exterior walls have greater insulation and it places triple glazing, you know, that will all be to the benefit. But yes, that is, that is a new impulse and, uh, a new initiative, I think I should be saying, you know, that we have to look at. I'll also say that the two building consultants for the Board of Library Commissioners did write the chapter in ALA's book on libraries and sustainability on sustainable buildings. So there are other models, um, you know, some small buildings that just got better windows and blow-in attic insulation. And then other, uh, buildings like the Medford Library that have gone solar. So we, we're prepared, you know, to look at that. We, there was a review of our design and there were suggestions immediately after our design was, um, submitted. But net zero, um, and climate, um, change were not as high on everyone's list as they absolutely would be now.
Thank you. On any other questions for Ellen before we move on? Anita?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say good luck. I've been following this, as well as during the capital planning committee. And I know it's a lot of work, I know it's a lot of waiting. And it's just sort of like, it's just a lot of anxiety, at least that I, I feel for you. I'm waiting for the timeline and stuff. So just thank you for the update. Appreciate your time.
Well, we're, we're very fortunate in Massachusetts. So now I'll make a final plug here. In Massachusetts, we're very fortunate to have the original state library agency in the United States. And we have a strong library tradition with lots of donations and benefaction in our history. And we should go, this, this is our $7.85 million of tax money that we're paying for. And we should try to reclaim it for our community.
That's right. That's a really good way to end.
Let's go for it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, thank you.
A great evening. Uh, Eric, you may need to help me out. I think all we have left is correspondence and then adjournment. I see Patty, though. I'm wondering if Patty's got something for us, or if she's just still, still here because of last time.
She's still here. So you are correct. We just have the correspondence left.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to waive the reading of correspondence. A second?
Back one, Eric.
All, all in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. And unless there's any further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
How about a second? Okay. All those in favor, please wave. Okay. Thank you all. And thank you all that have joined us tonight. Uh, have a great evening and be well.
Thank you.
Thanks.